Carter County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Quinn, if you will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
We have to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Vice Chairman Mansfield, will you provide the invocation?
Everyone will bow their heads. Dear Lord, as we gather on this Easter Monday, we lift up our hearts to you in peace and gratitude for the gift of your son's resurrection. May the joy and hope of Easter fill our meeting and inspire us in our work, guide our thoughts and actions, and help us to work together in unity and purpose. We ask for your blessing on this endeavor, and may it be a source of good for all involved. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'll read the ethics statement. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or the appearance of conflict with any matter or respective matter before the board this evening? If so, please avoid any undue participation in a particular matter. We'll do it on that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the agenda for this evening and add a number five A for the appointment of the permanent county manager, Sharon Griffin, from interim to county manager.
Motion to amend the agenda by Vice Chairman Mansfield, is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion now to approve the amended agenda for tonight's meeting.
All in favor of?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Shin, seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor? All right, at this time, we will have the swearing in of our newest county manager, Sharon Would you like to invite your family?
Keep the Bible close by, keep me straight. All right, if you will, raise your right hand, left hand on the Bible, and state your name.
Aye, Sharon Griffin.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and law of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not consistent therewith, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Carter County Manager, so help me, God.
I do, your honor.
Aye, state your name.
Sharon Griffin.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are and may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help you God.
Your honor.
Congratulations.
These are a special gift from county staff for you on your appointment tonight. Well, I'm not the one that did it.
He don't tell that.
There's a very special person that has a very green thumb, and he grew those roses for them from all of us.
I think it's evident of all the department heads we have here and all the great team we have assembled under your leadership with Dee and Matt and all the folks, and a lot of positive things are coming. You've already made such a great impact with all the towns and people, building great relationships with them, just awesome.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your honor. Got my work cut off.
All right, next, we have public comment. We only have one person signed up. Brian Nicolau. Is Brian in the room or is he out back?
Here he comes, here he comes, I see him.
Come on down.
My name is Brian Nicolau, 1502 Salter Path Road. Tonight, I want to talk about something that we need to remember and involves January 6, 2021. And I classify this, it was an event that was a success and failure of the state actors. It was a successful, it was successful to the deep state actors in that the events of that day kept the electors from being sent back to the states for further disposition of the 2020 election. It was a failure in that not more people died that day. For example, both the Patriot protesters and the Capitol Police were set up against each other at the Capitol Building in a purposely orchestrated chaotic environment. There were actors, infiltrators, and provocateurs who initiated many of the Capitol breaches and violence of that day. However, there were four victims of that day on January 6th. They were Ashley Babbitt, Roseanne Boylan, Kevin Greason, Benjamin Phillips. Those are the four citizens who died on that day. How many police officers died on that day? Some of you may say there was many, but there was no police officers killed on that day. If you did not know that, ask yourself why you don't know that information. It's because mainstream media is lying to you. So no police officers died that day, but there was a Brian Sicknick who was set up in the Capitol Rotunda and paraded as a police officer who was killed. He died of a stroke of natural causes. You can look up what I'm saying. Don't believe me what I'm saying, but just look it up. And the reason I'm talking about this today is because we have a movement of loud voices who are screaming to the skies with emotion and feelings. We need to keep focused on and not forget what happened, what brought us here today. We achieved the objective, we got the American First Agenda going forward, and we need to make sure we stay focused locally and not forget what occurred back in 2020. I did get a Grok search and asked, how many police officers committed suicide days after the event? There were four. Four police officers committed suicide. One on January 9th, one on January 15th, one on July 29th, and one on July 10th. So yes, four police officers committed suicide. I asked Grok, how many civilians committed suicide? And if you've done research on January 6th, you know that many of the civilian protesters committed suicide due to the weight of the government levied against them. But here's what Grok says. There is no definitive evidence or official records confirming that any protesters who participated in January 6, 2021, committed suicide. Okay. Where were any U.S. citizens, this is another question, were any U.S. citizens involved in the January 6 Capitol protesters convicted of insurrection? Remember, this was an insurrection. And here's Grok's answer. No U.S. citizens involved in January 6, 2021 Capitol riot were convicted of insurrection. But remember, this is the big insurrection. This was equivalent to December 7, 1941, the date that lived in it for me. Remember, 9/11, this was the attack, the insurrection that they correlated. I bring this up because I don't want you to forget, there is a movement going on, and it's not a grassroots movement, it's funded and it's orchestrated, and they scream at the sky about things that are not factual. Okay, so let's move beyond that, but let's talk about legacy media has resentlessly fed the American people a distorted and biased narrative of the events of January 6th, while the opposition feigns grassroots movements against the American First Agenda. Remember this, remember that the J Sixers, over 1,500 J Sixers were targeted, and they were early dawn raids, doors kicked in, flashbangs thrown in. These are the stories you're not going to hear, but you'll hear about the El Salvadoran citizen that was sent home to his country, and he's home now. But you'll hear, you won't hear about the trials of the J Sixers. So I'm going to ask you to go to stophate.com and watch the documentary. That's stophate.com. If you have any questions, this documentary uncovers the tragic legal battles waged against ordinary American families caught in the political motivated trap. The film presents shocking testimonies, devastating video evidence, and full scope of lawfare used to destroy families. These families are still putting their lives together. And I want to bring it up to attention while.
You can wrap it up.
Wrap it up, please.
We're out of time.
Last comment here. As we think about what's going on, remember, in 2021, the 500,000 missing children are still missing that came across and were trafficked across the border. So I compel, although I admire the opposition's ability to organize and gather, let's together talk about the 500,000 missing children trafficked across the border. I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Nicolau.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak that didn't sign up during public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move along. Next, we'll have the presentation of the request from the Down East Baseball League to support the construction of an indoor recreational facility at Eastern Park in Smyrna. Mr. Josh Arthur and Mr. Adam Wade.
Let me get our buzzer working. Good evening. I'll read a brief statement here and then I got a few things to say. I'm a proxy for Mr. Reaver, and he had to go on vacation, so bear with me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to ensure strong support for the proposed hitting facility at Eastern Park, Smyrna, that may be funded by the Big Rock Foundation and to emphasize the importance of preparing for necessary building maintenance should this exciting project move forward. While funding has not been secured, the potential of this facility represents a major step forward for our community, particularly for our youth in the Down East area. Right now, children who want to train in a proper hitting facility have to travel to Moorhead City. For a child coming from Cedar Island, that's an hour each way. That kind of distance can be a real barrier for participation, especially for families juggling work, school, and other commitments. This facility would bring the opportunity closer to home, making it easier and more accessible for adolescents to grow, compete, and be part of something meaningful. But to make the most of this opportunity, we need to ensure the supporting building infrastructure is maintained and equipped to support long-term use. A generous investment from Big Rock would be a game changer, but it's our job to match that investment with foresight and care. If we plan now for the upkeep and sustainability of this space, we can ensure this project becomes a lasting asset for generations to come. So to add to that, so we, Coach Adam here, created a travel ball team, been in numerous championship games, have kids, you know, they use the hitting facility in Moorhead. How much is it?
It's $500 a month.
It's $500 a month to use that. We got kids. You have a softball team, travel team that went to Alabama, played in the World Series, finished third. We have competitive kids, and then we have some that maybe they do struggle, maybe they don't, but it's not right for them to have to go that hard. And everybody knows how wet it can get Down East, and there's numerous times we can't use the fields. So our thing is, we build a building, we're just asking you to maintain it. That's all we're asking. I think it's a simple request, and we would ask that as far as the maintaining part, which we give you the proposal, I know, but the maintaining part, work the same as the gyms go. I mean, yeah, I know they have Bluetooth locks, and we can work on that in the future, but maintain it the same as the gyms. I mean, everybody plays basketball, and we have somebody that opens the gym, but it would be better if the county maintained it, it would be your building. We're just going to build it, and then you help us. So I thank you for that, your time, but if you got any questions, I can probably answer a few, but I may not have all of them. We just want permission to use the land to build the building.
So you're going to secure funding to build the building?
We're going to secure the funding, we're going to build the building, we just want you to maintain it, which should be minor, and then, you know, we'll ask permission to use it, but you have to think that, it's a good point that Adam brought up, I mean, during the ball months, I mean, unless it rains, we're not going to really use it, you know, it's not like it's going to be a daily use thing. Now, in the wintertime, yes, so there's not going to be heated, or we don't have heat and air, we haven't put any of that. It's just a hitting facility. So we're just asking permission if it's okay with you all.
Would you have to repurpose any of the current park out there to do it, or is this just?
No, sir. It's, we're going to be, we already got a site right by the T-ball field when you turn in, we've got area right there between there and the parking lot, we're going to use that.
Standby lot right there.
Yep.
Seems like a no-brainer to me, I'm in favor, it's a pleasure of the board.
They built it.
Yeah.
22.
Yeah.
This would fall under Parks and Recs, right?
That's correct.
So has anybody addressed that with the director of Parks and Rec?
That would be Mr. Reaver, and has, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would defer to her, find out what the burden would be for her to say it's.
I think you've already cleared it with them, hadn't you, Josh?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, that's what they're bringing.
We're just asking for y'all's permission now for the property. That's correct, we just need to use the property.
Well, and we have to provide the additional funding to maintain.
Yeah, it becomes a budget item for the Parks and.
Not a very large one, but small.
Yeah. Because, I mean, like I say, we're asking you to keep the building up, and yeah, I know, to pay the light bill, but the thing is, is that we don't have heat and air, so I mean, it's just like.
What's the size of the building?
50 by 9.
4,500 square feet.
Yeah, 4,500 square feet. It's 50 by 90.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed forward, allow them to apply for the grant, and the county will maintain the structure, being it's on our property.
Second.
All right, all in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
One item I missed, we need to officially vote on the appointment of Ms. Griffin as a.
County manager.
It was all exciting, but is there a motion to make final the appointment of Sharon Griffin? Motion by Commissioner Waldrath, seconded by Commissioner Shin, all in favor? Unanimous. So, now it's official. All right.
Dismissed.
Next, we have Mr. Greg Hartman, our interim planning director, and we're going to have a public hearing for the proposed tax amendment to section 3,400 of the Carter County zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the county commissioners and members of the general public. We do have just one item to bring before the board tonight, is a tax amendment request. Marcy Godwin and Julian Davis have requested a tax amendment to section 3,400, table of permitted and special uses of the Carter County zoning ordinance. The applicants are the owners of Mitchell Village Animal Hospital and are looking to open a business that offers pet cremation services and having a hard time finding parcels for sale in unincorporated Carter County to permit crematorium. Specifically, this tax amendment would allow crematoriums of permitted use in the B1, General Business District, LIW, Light Industrial Wholesale District, and IW, Industrial Wholesale District. Currently, this use is not a permitted use in any of these three zoning districts. It is a permitted use with a special use permit in the RA, R35, R20, R15, R15M, and R10 zoning districts. Staff is prepared to propose changes to section 3,400 of the table of permitted and special uses, and at its meeting on March 9, 2025, planning commission voted seven to zero to unanimously recommend approving the proposed tax amendment to section 3,400 of the Carter County zoning ordinance. Staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, is there any questions for Greg?
I saw it was Greg. So Greg, I mean, do you know if they currently have something under contract that they're wanting this to be passed for, or?
They do not.
We couldn't find it.
Okay.
Not at this time, they're having a hard time, given that.
No, no, I mean, I get they're having a hard time, and I think we're all, we'll see, but I think it's, I think the request is reasonable.
And it's a little strange that it's permitted by special use in the residential zoning districts, I chased that back.
You can do it in a neighborhood, but not in a business district?
Not in a business district, yeah.
Okay, we'll take care of this real quick. Is there a motion to go in a public hearing?
Motion to go in the public hearing?
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am. If you'll come forward, state your name and address.
John.
I don't think she has, there's no time limit on public hearing.
Good evening, I'm Laura Montokio, I'm Mary Cheedon King Real Estate at Calda Williams Crystal Coast, 5420 Highway 70 West in Moorhead, and I'm here representing Dr. Godwin and Dr. Davis because they're on spring break with their children. I just wanted to reiterate what Greg said, they feel there's a real need in the community for, especially for a pet crematorium, the closest one is in Newbury, and we have not been able to find a place to put it, so thank you for your consideration on their behalf.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Shin, all in favor? All right, is there a motion to approve or deny the?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the tax amendment to section 3,400 of the Carter County zoning ordinance.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor?
Yes, sir.
Sir?
Discussion?
Go ahead with discussion, sorry about that.
I just want to make sure I didn't miss it. Was there any environmental concerns that we would have to deal with later with the crematorium?
There are not, no, any, I guess regulations encompassing the state.
So there's nothing that's been found, or? It's kind of ironic that it's authorized in residential area but not in business, right?
I mean, Munden has one, I mean, you just don't notice the stack, it's not that high in what used to be, I mean, Brooks, Snowy, I mean, they do too, I mean, for animals, I don't see any difference in humans, so I mean, I don't see there's any issues.
Thank you, bro.
All right. Okay, all in favor? There you go, you got it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consistency statement, the planned consistency.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Moore, all in favor?
Sir, Greg needs to read it.
Yes, thank you, Greg, because I wasn't going to remember all that.
At its meeting on March 9, 2025, the planning commission voted seven to nothing, unanimously recommend approving this proposed tax amendment to section 3,400 of the Carter County zoning ordinance, and they found that the proposed tax amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Camel Land Use Plan because the proposed use is much less intensive than the current uses that are currently allowed those three zones.
Excellent.
And in my motion, I'd like to reiterate what they, their comments.
All right, all in favor? The ayes have it. Thank you, Greg. Now, we have the official manager's report.
Thank you so much, and I would, first of all, like to thank all of you for allowing me to serve as your county manager. I'm very honored, and I truly appreciate your confidence in me. And we do have a lot of work to do, but I'm very, very excited. We've got a great team, and we're excited to move forward. A couple of announcements for everyone here and for the general public who might be paying attention to our meeting tonight. Our 2025 general reappraisal formal appeals deadline is Friday, May 2nd at 5:00 p.m. We just wanted to reiterate that. So if anybody has an appeal of the valuation of their property, and keep in mind, what you've received is not a tax bill, it's actually a valuation to try to bring values up to market value across the county, but if you have an appeal about that value, your time is running out, and you have to appeal at the tax office by Friday, May 2nd. Also, we have public meetings coming up for the draft comprehensive transportation plan. These will be from 5:30 to 7:30 across the county. On May 7th, it will be at Beaufort Library; May 8th, Western Park Community Center; May 14th, Fort Benjamin Recreation Center; and May 15th, Pine Mill Shores Town Hall. So this is a drop-in style public meeting to talk about the draft transportation plan project for the future for Carteret County. If you have any questions about this, feel free to reach out to us. Also, three events this Saturday. Our household hazardous waste collection event is this Saturday, April 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Carteret County Health Department parking lot. You can safely dispose of various household hazardous waste items that normally you can't bring to our convenience sites. Also, the litter-free land and sea countywide cleanup day is also this Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 to 11:00. We encourage residents to participate in this to keep our community absolutely beautiful. Operation Medicine Drop is also happening this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at all Food Lion locations in Carteret County. This is a safe and convenient way to dispose of unwanted and expired medications, we encourage you to do that. Just two more announcements, our annual Carteret County Hurricane Preparedness Expo, that season is just around the corner, that is scheduled for Monday, May 5th, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the Crystal Coast Civic Center in Moorhead City. And our Healthy Aging Expo, this is our 11th Annual Healthy Aging Expo, it's on Friday, May 9th, at the Leon Mann Jr. Enrichment Center, also known as the Senior Center, and our senior services staff have worked very hard to organize this fantastic event. We hope that many of you can join us, and unless you have questions, that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we will have board appointments. The first one is the Board of Equalization and Review. Ms. Vanessa Justice has applied for an appointment to an alternate seat for a one-year term. All in favor of Ms. Justice? All right. Next is the Coastal Regional Solid Waste Management Authority. We're going to appoint our new Assistant County Manager, Matthew Renaud, to an unexpired term of our last Assistant County Manager. All in favor of Matt? And next is the Consolidated Human Services Board, Ms. Mary Willis, appointment to a four-year term as a consumer representative. All in favor of Ms. Willis? Next is the Economic Development Foundation, Jamie Limbaugh, appointment to a one-year term. All in favor of Ms. Limbaugh? Next is the Harbor Authority, Matt Renaud, our Assistant County Manager, and Mr. Larry Lann. I'd like to table the other one for further, I'd need to check with him. All in favor of Mr. Lann and Ms. Renaud? All right. All right. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Haley Cooley, appointment to a two-year term as the DSS Dex of the Knee. All in favor of Ms. Cooley? Next is the Town of Beaufort ETJ Planning Board.
You may as well say your-
I'm probably going to, I'm probably going to butcher that last name.
Just say Jeff. He can, he knows his last name.
Mr. Jeff, Verugendall Hill, all in favor of Jeff?
Jeff. That's not from Carter-
He's not from Harker's Island, I can tell you that. But, uh, next, we have the Morehead City, uh, Planning Board.
Diane Toodle and Matt Johnson.
All in favor of Mr. Toodle and Mr. Johnson? Has it? Town of Newport ETJ Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Renominate, Mr. Matt Shortway, Mr. Dominique Spadaro and Mr. Johnny Whaley for a three-year reappointments.
All right. All in favor of Mr. Shortway, Spadaro and Whaley? As ayes have it. Next one is the Senior Center Advisory Board. Franklin Reams and Kathleen Cox, all in favor? Has it for the Senior Center Advisory Board? We're doing pretty good on time. Next is Commissioner Comment. We'll start with Commissioner Waldrath.
Good evening. It's been a pleasure working so far with interim Ms. Sharon, and we're so excited to have now town or county manager Griffin with us. So that's a big hurdle and we're happy to be on the other side of that and thank you for your upcoming service. I have a couple announcements. A couple weeks ago, Sheriff was acknowledged with several others, so let me just highlight this. This was in our local newspaper, but building on our commitment to combating the opioid crisis, I wanted to acknowledge the public forum that recently took place. This gathering was hosted by the Fentanyl Victims Network of North Carolina, shedding light on the devastating impact that the drug is having in our community and the families that are bravely sharing their personal experiences, losing their loved ones to the epidemic. It was also an opportunity to recognize the outstanding efforts of several local leaders in the fight. Sheriff Buck, who was here earlier, was recognized. District Attorney Scott Thomas, Assistant District Attorney Dave Spence and Legal Assistant Michelle Gilliken from the Prosecutorial District Four. They were all honored during this event and their dedication, along with the ongoing efforts of the port team here in Carteret County, have a lot to be proud of in combating and we're happy to be a part of the county process to make that, to make a difference in this area. And finally, in the same, in the same vein, as we wrap up tonight's meeting, I want to highlight an important, an important upcoming event. The Carteret County Health Department's port team in collaboration with Hope Mission Coastal Carolina will be hosting a Safe Summer Cookout on Saturday, the third of May, from one till four at the Health Department in Morehead City. This event coincides with National Fentanyl Awareness Day and aims to educate our community about the dangers of fentanyl and offer support to those affected by the substance abuse. Attendees can enjoy free food, connect with local resources and see Narcan demonstrations and hear personal stories. We encourage everyone in the community to attend that on May third from one to four. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waldrath. Commissioner Moore?
Okay, I'd like to, again, congratulate Ms. Sharon for getting the position. She's got nothing but good things I'm hearing from everybody I've talked with, all of the employees and in the surrounding areas, this people has told me, just a great person to work, work with and looking great for some good things ahead. So happy that we're able to start and to put together some, some interest in, in our ball fields and areas for our children, whether they be playing or just the area for people to, to go out and make sure our kids are, has got something they can be doing in the county. One of the most things that I've heard in the past is having something for our, our kids. You know, we're talking about the drugs and all that. That's things that we can do to help keep that, there's drugs away from our kids and I think that we need to, to, you know, look at and do everything we can to make sure that we're doing everything we can for those kids and I'm certainly for that. I like to talk with several employees. I just want to let all employees know, I thank them for all the good work that they do. You know, there's the employees really what makes our county move forward and, and help to, whereas cleaning of the county of fields or right on up to the, the working on, on the county vehicles. But a great, great employees we have and I'd just like personally thank these employees for all the work that they do and just personally thank them. That being said, Chairman, I pass it.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Chairman. Just tickle to death to have you on as a permanent part of our county government. Been doing a great job so far and I think you're going to continue to do a great job. I'm suffering a little bit of allergy setbacks today, so this is as far as I'm going to go with my comments. Just congratulations. I hope everybody had a happy Easter.
Solid motion about that.
Yeah, yeah, yes. But, you know, tears will dry then for, for our new county manager. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Clark?
I'm going to keep it brief, but I'm going to focus on emphasizing to Carter County citizens that they've scored a home run with having Sharon Griffin as our county commissioner. She has, she hasn't failed in any task she's been assigned in her, in her time being here. Her effort is, is always a hundred percent. She's very eloquent, she's well spoken, highly educated. I don't believe we could have done any better. Sharon, we really appreciate having you and thank you for taking the position. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Shin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief as well, ditto to all the comments that have been made so far this evening. Notice we've got a lot of staff here tonight, so I'll take the opportunity to thank you all for your dedicated service to the town, to the county and for what you do and, and working through or getting into the budget season, so try to accommodate as best we can, all the departments and keep everybody, keep everybody afloat. So keep up the good work, the hard work, diligent work and, and to follow. So several months ago, a while back, we, we welcomed Sharon on as our county manager. So now we have the opportunity to welcome you aboard again as our manager. Look forward to, to a good working relationship. I think everybody's impressed so far. I think it was a hands down decision, so you made it easy for us to choose. So thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Shin. Vice Chairman Mansfield?
An effort for Commissioner Chadwick to beat Commissioner Farrington's old record of the shortest meeting possible. I'm going to be very brief. Thank you to all of our employees. You guys are the ones that grow those flowers and pick those flowers and make Dee look good by representing them. You guys are what make all of us look good.
I thought Dee had the green thumb.
Y'all, y'all do all the work and we appreciate you and all, all the things that you do. And thank you very much and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Mansfield.
Motion to adjourn so you can take the record.
All right. I'm, I'm going to beat it. It's going to be just a second. The Down East folks are receiving letters about their fire tax district. Some people are up in arms about it, but what that is, is we took Davis, Stacy, Sea Level and Atlantic Fire Department and they combined them all into one Down East Fire Department. And each one of those departments had a, was it Steven, like a five and a half cent? Someone might've had a five and three-quarter cent, someone might've had a eight cent tax rate. And what we've done is averaged them out and you're going to have one tax rate. So it's, it's not going to be a big change. It's going to be very similar to what you had before, but that's the notices going around Down East from basically Williston on to Atlantic. So that's, that's just a housekeeping item that's neatening up the tax rate, making them all the same for simplistic measures. A lot of folks are commenting about the recent revow. You know, you do have the opportunity to appeal. I suggest everyone examine your revow closely for any errors. If there is any errors, please contact the tax office before. The deadline, which is May-
May second.
May second. And make sure, you know, you don't have any mistakes and those folks, you call them up, they're very friendly, very helpful. They'll help work you through if there's any mistakes on your tax bill and, and that'll be corrected and that'll be put to bed. I want to, we just had Easter yesterday, wanted to wish everyone a happy Easter. Great weather, I think it's warming up and I think the mayflies is already starting to come out and so they're, they're aggravating, but it's been great weather and people are starting to show up in Carteret County and to our employees, certainly we thank you for doing a great job for us. We know thanks doesn't always pay the bills, so we are working on something very nice for you in the new budget year and I think our staff will be very appreciative once they see that coming down the pike. And to Sharon, we got to test drive you for a couple of months as a county manager and you did such a good job. It was a unanimous decision to, to put you in place as a permanent, but you, not only are you the county manager, you're a county attorney and you do a great job at both and you've assembled a great team, like I said earlier here, so welcome in the official capacity, you don't have to be interim no more, so. Is there anything, anything other, other that come before the board?
It may be a timeout.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Shin, all in favor? Thirty-five minutes.
It's like thirty-seven to me. I'm trying to get you out thirty-five minutes early, so you actually have forty.
I don't know what happened to my clock. It's like you would never come off the two-minute warning now.